All right, welcome to tonight's City Council Study Session for Monday, July 28th, 2025. Mayor Sierra is out of town this week and Kim Wright is not feeling well. Councilmember Wright's not feeling well, so we have a quorum here with five of us. And we have four informational items on the agenda tonight. First up is 1A, our South Metro Waste Diversion Plan. And we have our Sustainability Project Manager Mel England. And I believe online, we have Senior Consultant Helen Lee to present a draft of the South Metro Waste Diversion Plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. England.
Hello, Mel Engle. Ooh. Hello, Mel England, Sustainability Program Manager. Thank you, Mayor Protem and councilmembers, for having myself and Helen here to discuss the South Metro Waste Diversion Plan. This includes Inglewood, Littleton, Centennial, and Sheridan. One of the biggest impetuses for this plan actually happened a few years ago. The city had applied for a waste diversion grant through the state for composting. We made it all the way to the second round, and then we didn't get chosen. And some of the comments that we heard from the folks at the state on the board, they were like, hey, we actually want you to take a little bit of a step back. We want to see kind of some data, a diversion plan, something like that, before you apply for diversion program implementation. So that's where we are today. We kicked off this project back in February of 2024, so it's been quite a while. And this is where I have to read all the acronyms. This project was fully funded by the Colorado Circular Community, or C3 Enterprise. This is a statewide program dedicated to supporting Colorado's communities and its stakeholders' transition to a circular economy. Technical support is provided by the C3 Outreach and Technical Assistance Staff and Team of the Contracted Subject Matter Experts Led by STEPS. STEPS stands for Strategic Technical Expertise for the Public Sector. So here today from STEPS, we have Helen Lee, who is our Project Manager and Senior Consultant at RRS, as well as Randy Mormon. He's the Director of Community Campaigns at EcoCycle. And I'll now hand it over to them to do the presentation.
All right, thank you, Mel. Mayor Protem Anderson, members of council, thank you so much for having us here today to talk trash. It's our favorite topic, and we're really excited to provide the council an overview of this plan. Next slide, please, to the agenda slide. Tonight, we're going to be covering the mission behind the plan, how it was developed, who we engage, what we learned from the waste composition study, and the actions that we identify, both regionally and city-specific, to Inglewood. And what you'll be hearing from us today is a plan that serves as a blueprint for the next 10 years to advance waste reduction and diversion for Inglewood. And of course, prior to implementation, any strategies that we discussed today will need to come before council again. So for example, if there's a code change or ordinance, it will have to come back before council with the full proposed tests prior to adoption. And so what this plan provides, what we're talking about today, is a way for the four cities of South Metro to have a prioritized list of activities and action items that can be focused on. Next, the South Metro region. We set an ambitious goal for this project, as Mel talked about, to transition to a more equitable and data-driven system focused on waste reduction and diversion guided by best practices. And a core component of this effort was to gather data specific to the region through a detailed waste composition study to inform meaningful strategies. And we also conducted a number of stakeholder engagement activities. And we heard from your residents that overwhelmingly, these support efforts increase recycling and composting access in the region. Next slide. And the development of this plan involved a comprehensive baseline assessment, that two-season waste composition generation study, and this robust stakeholder engagement. And in total, we had over 43,500 community interactions in the region. We talked with your local haulers and industry stakeholders. We mailed information to residents, conducted a regional survey in English and Spanish. And we also held focus groups with multifamily residents, disadvantaged communities, and businesses. We also trained residents champion on recycling, launched a dedicated website, and engaged through social media. We are also proud to host the Way Summit, where we spoke with elected officials on our learnings, gaps, and potential strategies. And we would like to acknowledge Mayor Sierra, councilmembers Russell, and councilmember Wright for also attending that Way Summit and sharing your insights. And lastly, our plan was presented to the Sustainability Commission. We're really pleased to share that they provided us a letter of support for this plan. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, the South Metro cities were committed to developing a data-driven plan. And so to support this, this two-season waste composition study was conducted, where we sorted through over 10,000 pounds of trash and recyclables. And what we found was that the region currently recycles only 15% of its waste. And looking ahead, South Metro is projected to generate 260,000 tons of waste annually by 2035, which is approximately 20 football fields 10 feet high each year. Next slide. And this composition study also revealed that approximately 78% of the materials currently sent to landfills could be recovered through a combination of existing programs, expanded recycling and composting services, and specialized collection efforts. And what we also learned is that nearly half of the residential waste generated in South Metro are composed of organic waste, which can be composted, which includes yard waste, food waste, and other compostables. Next. We also want to call out the state's producer responsibility program. This is also sometimes referred to as EPR. And this law is going to have a significant impact on how communities in Colorado provide recycling to residents, starting in 2026. So in a nutshell, this law requires that all producers of products sold in Colorado with packaging and paper to fund the statewide recycling system. And starting in 2026, the Producer Responsibility Organization, Circular Action Alliance, or CAA, will reimburse service providers for 100% of the net cost to collect and recycle materials covered under this program, the recyclables such as cardboard, aluminum, glass, metal, plastic. And so today, we're going to discuss some other recommendations with you that could be leveraging this reimbursement. And CAA is now in the process of finalizing this implementation plan with the state, but we recommend that the city monitor and stay engaged. In fact, actually, next Thursday, CAA is going to be hosting a webinar on how municipalities can access this fund, which is very exciting. Next slide. When selecting strategies for this action plan, we use a clear set of criteria to guide our recommendations. So we focus on strategies that have been successful in other communities, show strong potential to increase waste diversion, and had high-to-medium levels of support from stakeholders. We also prioritize actions that could expand access to services and advance equity across the region. Next. So we'll first go into the regional strategies for South Metro. Three were selected collectively by the four cities. And these priorities and strategies were evaluated for diversion impact as well as fiscal impact. Next, first, establishing regional drop-off centers. So this was identified as a critical need that we consistently heard from focus groups as well as residential surveys, especially for those without access to curbside recycling. And in fact, the nearest drop-off centers to the region are located in Aurora and Arvada. Recycling drop-off centers provide convenient ways for residents who may not have access to recycling or not the greatest access to recycling to bring materials. Next. Second, improving access to organics recycling. This includes food scraps, yard waste, and other compostable materials. As I mentioned earlier, nearly half of the waste generated by residents in South Metro are organic waste. And so this plan supports expanding infrastructure, including a large-scale organics processing facility that can accept more than just yard waste. And right now, A1 Organics in Sheridan, they operate a facility that accepts yard waste only. And there are fewer smaller-scale food waste drop-off centers available in the region. But as we divert more organic materials, our processing capacity will also need to grow. And we believe that, of course, public-private partnerships and supporting industries for these facilities will be very important. Next. And third, supporting recycling composting for multifamily and commercial properties. Given Inglewood's significant number of residents living in multifamily housing and more than over 1,500 employer entities in the region, for Inglewood, it's essential that we continue working together to expand access to improve diversion in these high-impact sectors. Next. And moving into the city-specific strategies, there are nine strategies that we'd like to go over for Inglewood. I'm going to pass it over to Randy, who's going to start with some of the strategies focused around policy and outreach.
Thanks, Helen. Can we go to the next slide, please? So I'm gonna start with producer responsibility. And as Helen mentioned earlier, this is often referred to as EPR, Extended Producer Responsibility. It's going to begin implementation in 2026. We will fully fund recycling services for residents. That includes both single-family and multifamily. The program will start with communities that have either a minutably-run program, like Denver and Longmont, or organized hauling contracts like Sheridan and Arvada. Because Inglewood is an open market, it does present some challenges. First, haulers must opt in to participate in the producer responsibility program. And there's always the possibility that some haulers won't choose to participate, and therefore, there will be customers that won't have that free access to recycling that the program provides. Also, it'll take longer for Circular Action Alliance to identify haulers and coordinate payments. However, there are several policies that Inglewood can consider now to help its residents take full advantage of the producer responsibility program. Two of these policies, I'm going to go into more in-depth in the next couple of slides, the equal space ordinance and the organized hauling contract. But other considerations to consider include adding to your existing hauler licensing ordinance requirements. That haulers report data on the recycling tons collected. Being able to report this data to the producer responsibility organization allows them to know how much recycling is being collected and measure the effectiveness of the program. Two other requirements you may include in your hauler licensing is requiring bundling of recycling in the service, the waste services, so residents don't have to opt in, thus automatically providing recycling to every customer of the hauling services in your city. And also requiring what we call pay-as-you-through-a pricing structure or volume-based pricing. And what that does is incentivize residents to recycle more, because they would pay different rates according to the size of their trash cart. Next slide, please. So to dive in a little bit on some specific ordinances you may consider, one is an equal space ordinance. So what does that do? Well, since over a third of the households in Inglewood are multifamily, and producer responsibility is going to pay for recycling services to multifamily residences, an equal space ordinance will ensure, at least in new buildings, that the infrastructure is there to provide that recycling service. It requires new commercial buildings to provide the same amount of space for recycling infrastructure as for trash. So for example, enclosures and shoots that you find in buildings would have to be built for both trash and recycling. Several cities have these types of ordinances right now, including Superior, Broomfield, and Fort Collins. Next slide, please. So now I know Inglewood has looked at contracting for trash and recycling before and decided not to move forward at that time. And I think now with producer responsibility, it's an opportune time to look at this again as an option for the city. With producer responsibility, that's going to lower the cost for every resident, who will be paying into the program specifically for the recycling portion of that contract. Now, if you look at this graph on the slide, it's a comparison of the costs that residents are paying in the different cities in the South Metro area. And the city of Sheridan has a single hauler contract. They're the only city currently in South Metro. And they're contracted with Republic Services. And they have one of the lowest pricing available to residents, where residents are paying between $11 and $20 a month for both trash and recycling. Now, in comparison in Inglewood with an open market, we see residents paying anywhere between $20 and $50 a month. Now, this price difference right now is due primarily to economy of scale and group rate pricing, where the hauler can offer a lower price per household when it is picking up from every home in the city. Producer responsibility is going to lower that price even more for a contract with guaranteeing that the cost of recycling of that contract will be covered by the producer responsibility program. Now, I just want to highlight some additional benefits of an organized collection system. And one is it's going to create a fair pricing system for residents. The city of Fort Collins conducted a pricing study before it switched to organized hauling recently, and found that in the open market, individual homes, they got the same service from the same hauler, had different pricing. Pricing varied greatly for the same trash and recycling services, where some residents were paying anywhere between $6 to $22 per month more than their neighbors for the exact same service. And Fort Collins also saw significant price increases in the open market, somewhere between 2% for some haulers, all the way up to 41%. It occurred just between the years of 2022 and 2023. One of the advantages of a contract, the city can actually lock in prices for a certain period of time and greatly limit what those price increases are after those prices have been locked in. Additionally, many Inglewood residents, through our community outreach aspects of this project, expressed concern for the amount of truck traffic as related to impacts like air pollution and safety issues with the open market system. Also, Fort Collins conducted a study in 2022 on the impacts of truck traffic. And they found that 24% of road damage on neighborhood streets was caused by trash truck traffic, resulting in a cost to the city of $889,000 annually. So a hauler contract is going to greatly reduce the amount of trucks on city and neighborhood streets, and also then reduce these impacts that we're hearing complaints about from residents. And finally, residents also shared that they wanted greater accountability with haulers. Well, a contract can hold the hauler to high customer service standards and then impose fines when those customer standards are not being met. Under an open market, the city has very little ability to hold the haulers accountable to these expectations. And I'm ready for the next slide. So the last policy that I want to cover with you this evening is construction and demolition, an ordinance regarding CND, as it's often referred to. And these are materials like concrete, asphalt, lumber, metal, gypsum, wallboard, roofing products. And they together make up about 25% of what is generated in our state and ending up in the landfill. And one of the best practices that we are finding is a CND recycling ordinance, which requires contracts to sort these materials from the demolition projects and then recycle those materials. And one of the best practices in these ordinances is a deposit refund system. So it requires contractors to submit a deposit to the city. It is fully refundable if the waste diversion requirements are met. And the deposit refund system is tied to specific waste diversion requirements as part of the building permit process. So this really lends legitimacy to the requirements and helps ensure that the data is being reported. I'll go into a little more explanation of how this works. So the city of Boulder uses this. It requires projects to create a sustainable deconstruction plan prior to applying for a demolition permit. And they submit a refundable deconstruction deposit of $1 per square foot of the structure with a $1,500 minimum. Projects must divert a minimum of three building material types, and 75% of the materials generated from the deconstruction projects by weight must be diverted from the landfill, including concrete and asphalt. Once the project is complete, permitees submit weight tickets from when they've recycled those materials back to the city, and a diversion report is issued to demonstrate that the requirements were met. And if 75% or more of the three material types were diverted, the project receiver will full deposit refund. If it is a lower percentage or less than those three materials that diverted, then a portion of the deposit gets refunded. And so they have found this to be a very effective tool in reducing the amount of waste or sending to landfills from their construction and deconstruction projects. All right, next slide, please. So finally, I want to hit upon something really important. And whatever the city decides to do as far as next steps in waste diversion and zero waste is ongoing community outreach and engagement. According to our community engagement that we did with this project, which included focus groups and surveys, the biggest barriers to recycling is a low trust in the system, the materials are actually getting recycled, and a lack of knowledge about what to recycle. And this is no surprise. We see this throughout the state, and we also see this across the country. So to overcome these barriers, we recommend the city reach out to existing community groups and provide education on why and how to recycle, stressing that the system can be trusted. Public and private investments have been made to properly support, sort these materials, and get recycled and sold at the market, where it's actually very valuable material if it's being recycled. So we also, in addition to doing these community group education efforts, we strongly recommend looking at a peer-to-peer education program. We at EcoCycle have over almost 50 years of experience in this, and we have found that the most effective way to educate folks about recycling and zero waste is when neighbors, fellow coworkers, and family and friends share information. Therefore, we suggest hosting trainings for residents to become recycling champions so they can share their knowledge with their networks. Additionally, city staff and volunteers like resident champions can also table at community events to distribute resources and answer questions. And finally, through this project, we've set up a South Metro Waste Diversion website and hope that it continues to can be used as a place to put resources for residents. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to you, Helen.
Thanks, Randy. I know we want to have ample time for discussion, so I'll go through these last remaining strategies quickly. We know that food scraps for single-family residents is a huge opportunity. So looking at this strategy will be really helpful to really tackle that diversion. Next slide. And we also know that it's important to not only convert that organic waste into compost, but to utilize the finished compost for healthier soil, reducing erosion and supporting the local composting economy. And Inglewood can do this in a few different ways, such as working with internal city departments or encouraging developers to utilize finished compost. Next. And quickly wrapping up a few more strategies, we believe that Inglewood has supported businesses in the past. We know that with the phone grant and others, and Inglewood can look for opportunities for incentives or grants to support businesses with waste diversion. Often the case, we heard from businesses and focus groups that they want to do the right thing, and they just want to have some of the resources to be able to do so. Next. And lastly, we want to emphasize reduce and reuse above all, of course. And PCT Clinics are a powerful way to reduce waste while empowering residents to repair common household items like electronics, clothing, and furniture. And these events not only keep materials out of landfill, but they also help build community skills and resilience. Now, I'm going to hand it back over to Mel, who's going to talk a little bit about the next steps for this plan.
Thanks, Helen. Thanks, Randy. So for our next steps, we're going to be bringing this plan back in front of council on August 18th. And we're really hoping to get approval from council on the waste diversion plan. And just, I think Helen said it earlier, but approval of the plan, it's non-binding. It just gives staff a good blueprint of what to do next, what to look into, what we're allowed to look into. And then based on council's feedback as well, we're going to continue working with the region to promote those regional goals. What's the next step with that? And then finally, we're going to work together to look for those grant funding opportunities. We've heard really good things, luckily, from the state, that they're really happy with the plan and would be really excited to see an application from us, grant-funding-wise, to move things forward. So we're definitely going to keep a pulse on that as well, depending on the feedback that we get from council. So with that, we would love to open it up for any questions or discussions you all may have.
Thank you, Mel. And I'll now open up for City Council. Councilmember Nunez-Camp.
Thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you to our guest speakers as well. I really love whenever we can do something regionally. I think it's really thoughtful and efficient. I've got a couple of questions. Do we know if the other cities have already adopted the plan? Where are we in that process?
Yeah, so we're in the middle. So Littleton already had their study session. Helen, actually, am I asked you to answer this because you're going to all of them? I know Sheridan's coming in around last, and we're like in the middle. But Helen, do you have those dates handy?
Yeah, the city of Littleton, the study session was last week. We have Inglewood today, of course. Next is the city of Centennial, which would be next Tuesday. And then we have the city of Sheridan August 11th. And we're going to all of these work sessions to discuss the plan. And again, as Mel shared, we would love to get this adopted regionally.
Okay, so we're pretty early in that process. Can you speak a little bit more if we were to approve the plan, but maybe there are certain pieces of it that we didn't want to approve, a certain strategy or goal? How would we approach something like that?
Yeah, so if there was something in here that council didn't like, and I'm hoping Tamara and Jean can correct me if I butcher this, but I believe you all can approve with an amendment of we want to approve this plan. Sin.
Yes, you certainly can. We've also worked with Mel on the approval requirements. We're considering this more like a strategic plan. And then to implement any specific part of the plan, it would have to come back to council to follow your contract approval requirements. So this would just be more like the general overview, and then each step would require additional council action.
Great. Mayor Protem, I don't see any lights. Can I ask a couple more? The data, the survey data, the focus groups, do we have disaggregated data by city, or do we only have the regional group?
We do. Um, our data is uh can be found on SouthMetroWasteDivergence.com's website and all of our survey focus groups. Uh, we have included uh a lot of the survey points um by city as well, so you can find that.
I think that's something if staff can pull the Inglewood data for us, especially around some of the topics we've had longstanding community conversations around, I would find that really helpful to inform decision-making here. And then I'm sure I won't be the last one to ask a question on this, but on single hauler, um, for for our guests who maybe weren't following that as closely as we were, one of the biggest challenges we had at Inglewood with the cost was we have to have alley and street pickup, which not every city needs to do because of the way that our city is configured, which made the costs much higher than it would be for other cities. Um, in the data that was shared tonight, was that taken into consideration? And um have you seen solvency for that in other cities?
Oh, me and you. Yeah, thanks. Um, I know that recently uh the city and county of Broomfield just went through uh a contracting process and have uh gone with waste connections. And that was in their RFP that they requested that there's a certain portion of their city um that needs to have alley service, and they were able to get that in their contract and and get it approved. Um, so I I fully understand that concern um and know that, you know, there are it's it's really about what you can um get out of the results of your RFP and making sure that you're um putting that very specific requirement in there that you need.
Yeah, and Randy, if I can add on, I I would like to comment that, you know, since Inglewood has looked at um organized collections, it's been, you know, that was kind of post-COVID, um, and we're kind of in a completely different landscape with EPR, where the law is going to fund recycling for all residents for free, right? And so that is a really big opportunity. And um I think one that would be a missed opportunity if Inglewood didn't at least take a second look at this um since that since recycling will.
Thank you very much.
Um, other questions, council? I have a I have a couple while you guys are thinking about it. The um, can you explain a little bit what producer responsibility means exactly?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Um, so producer responsibility is something that has uh been around for a long time. Canada and Europe have had it for decades. Um, and it is under the understanding that uh producers that produce products that are sold are then responsible for the end of the life of that product. And so it's looking at how do you create that system? Um, and in particular, in Colorado, with producer responsibility, we're creating a system that covers a hundred percent of the cost of recycling of those materials. And um what happens is that the producers must join a producer responsibility organization that's been designated by the state, and so for us, that's Circular Action Alliance. And um those producers that are selling products in the state join and pay dues into that program. And those dues are determined by the volume of packaging that they're putting into the state for their products and the type of packaging. And so that's how the dues are set. So if you produce a lot of packaging, then you're going to pay a high due. Um, so it is the idea is to incentivize reducing that amount of packaging to what is minimally required and also looking at incentivizing the types of packaging to make them more recyclable and more reusable. Um, so aluminum can, for example, is infinitely recyclable and easy to recycle, and there's a big market for aluminum recycling. And so that would get a lower due price than something like Styrofoam, which is virtually not recyclable. Um, and so um that gives you an idea hopefully of how that system is set up. And so right now, where we are in the state in our process is that uh Circular Action Alliance is completing their plan of how they're going to implement the system, how they're going to charge the different producers, how are they um going to reimburse the service providers? How are they going to um build out infrastructure and services where there is lacking services? And um and they're going to present that plan and get it approved hopefully by the end of this year so they can start officially implementing it in two thousand and twenty-six.
Are is there are there studies from other places that have producer responsibility on the impact it has on packaging over time? Or are producers actually changing their packaging in response to this?
Yes, definitely. And again, the best examples of that are Canada and Europe and some other countries. In the United States, it's fairly new. Uh, we were the third state to adopt this policy. Um, and now there are five states that have adopted it, and there's more that are looking at it um in in legislation processes. And so um when we look to Europe and Canada, they have uh much higher recycling rates. Um, and then you do see differences in the packaging that's being sold in 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 those places, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Russell.
Uh, thank you, um, Mayor Portem. And um, so has this really been going on long enough for you all to determine? Will there be some products that won't be available in those states that um are requesting uh the producer pay the costs?
Sorry, can you repeat the question? I want to make sure I understand fully.
Has the study in the United States been going on long enough to know whether there will be availability of certain products in the states that decide to require this? I mean, it could very well be that producers may decide, okay, we're not going to sell in uh Colorado or these other states.
I understand your question. Okay, thank you. Um, the the advantage for the producers to participate in this is that they see having, they already do it, most of your big producers, and those are the ones that are going to be paying the most. They're already doing it outside of the United States, first of all. And so they are um looking at this as a way to capture more of the material and reduce their costs to manufacture these products. So there's a big incentive for them, generally speaking, to be part of this. And they are the ones that are supporting this legislation and creating these systems, and it's completely producer-run. Um, so that's the other advantage, that the state doesn't run it, it's the producers that run it. So there is um a national effort now to do more of this because it reduces their costs to manufacture these products, to have more of that material sourced locally because it increases the recycled content of that material.
So what about um, they're passing on the cost anyway to the consumer? So if the consumer can get it cheaper, I I think it's a flawed system. Um, but I was just curious to know if you had the answers. The form of government in Canada and Europe is totally different than in America. And the truth is, that could change things substantially. Thank you.
Council member Prue.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and this presentation. I think there's a lot of great ideas here, um, a lot of ideals to strive for. Um, I do have a handful of questions, a small handful. I'll be limited in what I wrote out earlier today. Um, first off, I just wanted to understand what disadvantaged communities were part of the focus group.
I'm going to pass that to Helen.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, Helen, I was just saying I was passing it to you because you led them.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Um, yes, council member. Um, so for the disadvantaged communities, we looked at a couple of different um criteria, whether they were maybe on step or with beneficiaries or if they um spoke a second language at home. Um, there were kind of different criteria, and we can get you that exact one um following this call.
Okay, so I guess the definition of disadvantaged communities in this instance would be um more around communities that have barriers to participate in the suggestions here. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, my second question is around composting. Uh, I have had some great success in the past and sometimes not great success in um composting food scraps. And so I'm just curious about um compliance with what is allowed in food scrap composting and what is not, and the potential impacts are um, you know, the overall quality of the compost that could be produced if we're having residents that are maybe not complying with not including certain things like citrus or meat products or those types of things that shouldn't be in food scrap compost.
Yeah, that's a really great question. So um right now, there's actually eleven food waste composting drop-off sites that are already operating in South Metro um by three different companies, Wampo Scraps and Compost Colorado. And they all accept uh food waste and other compostable materials. And um these materials uh can range in dairy, meat, and um bones and things like that. And what is determined in terms of what's accepted in your compost is really how it's composted at the processing facility. So some processing facilities are equipped to handle um the dairy, meat, bones, and other materials like uh and other compostable materials. Um, some might be just uh food scraps like um food, uh fruit scraps and things like that, initial scraps. And so what we're proposing here today is really looking at how we can gather as much compostable food scraps as possible. And um it can start with, you know, one, encouraging residents to utilize existing drop-off systems in the area. It could also look at potentially having a third bin for collecting organics for food waste. Um, and it could be done through kind of a stack omelet and it's dedicated. Um, some communities, they sometimes collect food and yard waste together in one container. Um, I think Denver uh does that. And so there's a lot of different pathways in how you can collect food scraps from drop-off options to perp site collections. And really, that implementation pathway will need to be determined with the staff, and the details um can be brought forward to council um before decisions are made. But the overarching goal is to defer more organics from going to landfills.
Yeah. Okay, I get that concept. I I'm hearing that there's potential for a need to then create a facility that could handle whatever level of food scraps that we're going to define and into our process were we to adopt this, correct?
Yeah, yes. And one thing to add there too is different composting facilities, kind of what I think what you were asking was accept different things. So A1 Organics up in Queensburg used to accept compostable plastics, and then they no longer do. It's really only that true organic waste. Um, Republic has a um organic site, and they do accept compostable plastics. Again, to what Helen was saying, it depends on the site, it depends on what they accept.
Okay, thank you. Um, my other question is around um access to end markets. So in the C and D section, it said success of that um type of uh implementation would be partially dependent on access to end markets. So has there been any analysis done to look at the end market availability and whether end markets are in a position to regionally um accept more cities that are participating in this?
Yeah, I have two things for this, and then I can hand it to Helen and or Randy. Um, so it's really exciting because um exploring a C and D ordinance is actually already in our strategic plan. It was a recommendation from the Sustainability Commission that they wanted to see us look into it. So it was great that that was one of the top recommendations. We have a really smart sustainability commission, I guess. Um, um, and something that one of the other cities in this study and I were talking about is partnering together to see if we could get grant funding or something to do a feasibility study first of the impact of C and D. Um, so that is something kind of that we're exploring already. From my knowledge, there isn't in the uh South Metro any study for C and D, but I'll let Helen and Randy take that one. There is.
Okay. And my last question, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, please.
I was going to say that there um is Oxford Recycling, which uh captures C and D debris as well as All Recycling, which captures scrap metal in Inglewood. And there's Western Metals Recycling for scrap metal in Sheridan. So there's some end markets, um, but really it's these ordinances that can help create new end markets and support the economy. Um, and yeah, I I don't know if Randy you want to add on to that.
I would just say it's it's definitely a growing um market for Colorado, and we're seeing more cities look at this, and we're seeing more entrepreneurs get into um developing businesses to address this. Um, so I know a number of of businesses that have come up, you know, in the metro area um in just the last couple of years. And I think this is going to be um an exciting and growing space for us as a state to look into how we develop those kind of end markets right here. Um, and we also have the Circular Economy Development Center that the state um has um runs, and that is through CDPHE. And so they're really looking at how to bring those kind of businesses here and attract them. And I know there's some projects going on right now with the Circular Economy Development Center around these exact types of end markets. So there's a lot of exciting things on the on the forefront and with regards to this.
Okay, that's helpful to understand how it would grow um as you're building the system. My last question would be um, in the model of pay-as-you-throw, how would that model um accommodate seasonal needs? So, you know, springtime, you're doing cleanup in your yard. Maybe throughout the year, you only need a certain size of container, but, you know, in the spring or fall, you might have larger amounts of yard waste, et cetera. So how would a system like that accommodate that?
That's a great question, and I would say that we have uh many cities, you know, have where you can switch out carts during the year uh and change your size of cart as your need changes. So they do allow for that. Um, they also allow if you're going to have additional, you know, like during the holidays where you produce an additional waste, all the wrapping paper, things like that, that you can buy tags to pay for extra bags to cover your extra uh waste beyond what fits in your bin. If it doesn't fit in your bin, of course, we, in my own neighborhood, we're always like, you know, sharing bins and saying, hey, do you got space? Can I put some of my stuff in there because I've got, you know, a full bin? There's those different kind of opportunities too. But um certainly you can you can set a program that allows um some the changes to be made as needed. And I would say that, you know, specific during the uh spring and summer and fall when you have a lot of additional um organic matter, if if composting can be part of your program, then that really helps alleviate that because then you're not paying extra for it. It's included in your program, especially like a a contractor, you can set that up.
Okay, very helpful answers. Thank you.
One thing I just really quickly want to add to that one, our neighbor to the west, Sheridan, for them, for their pay-as-you-throw program in the fall, which you have a lot of debris there, they actually get um leaf drop bags to add on to it at no extra cost.
Member Ward.
I'll start just by saying that on a philosophical level, I support voluntary methods. So when we talk about using the force of government to compel certain behaviors, uh I do bristle a little bit at that. So when I see some of these programs, like repair reuse events such as fix-six clinics, I I like that. I like to tinker with things. I like to fix things. I think that's a great community event, an opportunity to get people of similar interests in a room together to do fun stuff. Um, waste, business waste diversion grants, I think, would be quite helpful. Uh, I think about the restaurants in Inglewood and a lot of the food that probably does go into just a landfill now that could be potentially turned into compost if we were able to secure voluntary cooperation from businesses. They already dispose of their food grease, and it goes somewhere typically to be used in another form. Um, why not their food scraps as well? Um, and then the community engagement, I think, is going to be a critical part of this. Uh, so sharing neighbors who already support recycling or already subscribe to the philosophy that this is good for the community, sharing that information with their neighbors and talking about the why, I think is a great way to secure further engagement if if that's our goal. Uh, and then there are a few things that are more on the compulsory side that do concern me a little bit. Um, I think about our discussions about housing costs, and then I look at a construction and demolition recycling ordinance. And I think about how that may potentially increase the cost to a builder, which is often passed on to the consumer. Um, similarly, uh, the one thing on this list that I absolutely can't support because I am the type of person who only needs to touch a hot stove once is the uh single hauler, um, organized waste collection. I chaired the committee that discussed that. Uh, I sat through many, many contentious meetings. Uh, I I was neck deep in it for a long time and then I came onto council as the committee was finishing its work. And that was just not a fun project for the city. We went through multiple rounds of proposals. We submitted multiple RFPs. It became clear at the end of the process that we could not find a holler that could meet the needs of our residents. Because as one of my fellow council members pointed out, just a little while ago, the city and the way it is platted is pretty unique. So you can't do a block by block approach because you may have one house that needs curbside on the same block as a house that needs alley service. And that challenge was something that the haulers did not feel comfortable taking on. The other thing is that in the market right now, some haulers offer services at certain price levels that other haulers don't offer. For instance, concierge service where the holler, if your cart isn't on the curb, you can pay them extra every month to actually get out of the truck and grab the cart from wherever you store it and take it to the truck and dump it for you. That type of program is something that some members of our community might need or just might appreciate paying for that under a single holler contract for the city where the city controls the level of service being delivered would not be available. I think our residents spoke loud and clear four, five years ago when this subject came up. And I felt like we kicked a beehive. It was a worthwhile discussion, but the promise that I made to people at that time was that I would not vote for the implementation of a program unless it costs less and provided the same level of service that they were getting now. And we did not find a program that could do that. And that's why I strongly support taking this organized residential collection off of this list. We've looked at it. It hasn't been that long ago. Yes, the market was somewhat different than it is now, but it's too soon, if you ask me.
All right. Any other questions from council? Good. All right. Well, thank you, Mel. Thank you to our consultants, Ms. Lee and Mr. Mormon. And I think this is an important, important study and looking forward to working on the plan in the future. Even if we don't all agree to move every item forward, I think it's important to continue to focus on how we deal with our waste in the city. Next up is our pavement survey presentation. And we have with us engineering manager Kyle Branham and asset manager Megan Blass. And yeah, look forward to an update on our pavement status.
Good evening, council. I'm Kyle Branham, city engineer and public works. This is Megan.
Hello, I'm Megan Blass. I've been with the city for nearly five years. I am the asset program manager for the Public Works department.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. We're going to discuss the pavement survey that was completed in August of 2024. We're going to compare it to the survey that was completed in 2021. Talk about our pavement maintenance program a little bit and talk about the future of this program. So Megan's going to get us kicked off here, talking about the equipment they used.
Megan, if you could turn on your microphone, please, and maybe pull it a little closer to you so we can hear you clearly. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'd like to present our most recent pavement survey that we had collected last June. We partnered with a hyper local consulting firm, AG Wassener, AGW, that is located just down the street here on Zune, Brighton, Inglewood. They have this collection van that you can see here for automated data collection for our pavements. This vehicle uses innovative techniques to diagnose the paved streets using non-destructive methods. This data is collected in general conformance with ASTM international standards. Some of the tools that are used here that you can see are video cameras, GPS. It measures the surface roughness and lasers even will scan and measure rutting. Pavement distresses identified also include cracking, faulting, corner breaks, sprawling, rutting, patching and potholes. All of these conditions are then evaluated and calculated together to give us a overall condition index or OCI for each segment of pavement. OCI is a metric that is used to assess the condition of our roadways or other assets, providing a single score that reflects their overall quality. This is on a scale of zero, which is a fail, to 100, which is excellent or brand new condition. Each pavement segment is assigned a score from one intersection to the next. This is a valuable assessment measure that allows our engineers to focus on repair measures at the root problem and help us identify which assets need repair, allowing us to prioritize maintenance based on severity, track changes and condition over time and guide budget allocation.
Okay, just to talk about our city network a little bit. Our street network roadway classifications include arterials, collectors, minor collectors, residential, private and C dot roadways. Our main classifications are arterials, which account for approximately four miles of our city roadways. Arterial is a major thoroughfare that provide a link between different areas of a region or city. A good example is Broadway. You'll see going down the middle of our city there. It connects us to Denver to the north and Littleton to the south. Our collectors count for about 16 miles of our roadways. And they connect local or residential roads to arterials and they provide a balance between mobility and access. Good examples are Dartmouth, Oxford and Floyd. You know, these roadways typically have buses on them. They might have a bike lane and good sidewalks that help, help connect their city in different modes of transportation. Residential streets make up the vast majority of our streets. They prioritize access to properties and serve lower volume traffic within neighborhoods. A couple other classifications, private and C dot, those are not maintained by the city. But we do maintain approximately 125 miles of streets. If we were to need to replace those every street for some reason, it'd be nearly $80 million. So very expensive asset that we're maintaining here. Just to look at the history of this pavement survey a little bit. In 2021, we did a similar pavement survey and our average OCI rating came out to be a 62. The work that has been completed between the two, or between the two surveys totaled about $8 million, a little over $8 million. In 2023, you'll see we had, we spent approximately double than what we normally do. That was due to, we started using sales tax that year and we also had a pretty robust pavement maintenance fund. So we're able to spend quite a bit more money that year. And that was the year that we did, we paved Broadway with SMA. I feel like that, that year was, was a big contributor to our average OCI rating going above 70 in 2024.
All right. So here we can see the distribution of our overall condition index results across the city on this map. Notice this shows a lot of greens and yellows indicating that many of our streets are in very good, good and fair condition. On the pie chart, it is more clear that we can see that over half of our streets are in very good or good condition. Breaking down these results by the functional classification that Kyle had just mentioned, we can see that the ratings are distributed evenly. Inglewood has more residential streets by far than other streets. But this clearly shows us that over 60% of our residential streets are in very good or good condition.
So just looking at the map here of 2021 versus 2024. 2021 on the left, you'll see it has a lot more orange areas, segments than on the right. There's a lot more green, dark green and yellow segments, which means it's in a little bit better condition. You'll notice a lot of the work was done in pavement zone five up in the left corner there and on the bottom left. And then pavement zone one on the top right and through the Broadway corridor down the center of the city there. And so just some things that we can learn by routinely serving our pavement is we have a much better understanding of how our streets degrade over time. Megan's going to tell you about a program later that we use to help predict how our streets will act in the future. And, and, you know, it gives us a degradation curve and so that we can look and see in five years, this, this street should be in this condition and 10 years it should be in this condition. So, so, so that's what the survey can help us, you know, getting these different data points to help that prediction. We can also track the effectiveness of our maintenance program and the impact of maintenance activities. You know, this, the data points that we get can lead us to making decisions such as doing more slurry seal versus more mill and overlay or vice versa. You know, it's going to help us determine where the best, you know, where we should best spend our money. So it'll also help us with early detection of pavement issues, which will enable, you know, our preventative maintenance. You know, we do have a degradation curve that we built in this program, but there's also outliers occasionally where a street degrades much quicker than what we're predicting. And so, you know, doing this pavement survey frequently will help us find those. It'll also help us ensure that our budget is spent wisely to extend the life of our streets. And it gives us reliable and consistent data for smarter data-driven decisions. This slide is just a few pictures of some examples. The top left there is a very good streak. It was likely paved within a year or two of this photo. You'll see there's no cracks, no visible cracks on the pavement. The top right is a good conditioned street. You'll see that it does have some cracking, but a lot of those cracks have been sealed. On the bottom left is a fair street. You'll see it has a decent amount of cracking, similar to the good street, but they're not sealed. And so this fair conditioned street is kind of, that's a great candidate for a sealant to do a crack seal or slurry seal. And that'll help prevent it from, from becoming a poor and poor condition. And so you'll see the poor condition, these cracks aren't sealed as well. And you're starting to see some more dense cracking, alligator cracking, if you will. And, and, you know, this, this likely would need some patching as well. And when, in that case, we would remove all of the pavement and the subgrade beneath of it to patch the subgrade and the pavement. That way we know it's all in good condition. And then the bottom right is kind of an example of a very poor street. That's when the subgrade is, is in poor condition and the roadway is pretty much completely deteriorated. So on to our pavement management program. Our program addresses different types of maintenance in different zones. The routine maintenance is filling of potholes and crack seals. That's typically done by our in-house streets team. Preventative maintenance is slurry seal. Slurry seal is recommended if the overall condition index is between 50 and 70, so in that fair range. And the slurry seal typically increases the pavement OCI by about 10 to 15%. Or sorry, corrective maintenance is mill and overlay and reconstruction. The mill and overlay is recommended if the OCI is between 30 and 50 in that poor range. And the mill and overlay will typically increase the OCI pavement to an absolute score of 95. It's not 100 because we didn't replace the subgrade, but a 95 is a very good score. And so a full pavement reconstruction is typically recommended if the OCI falls behind, below a 30. And so our five-year cycle for residential, we do a five-year cycle for residential collector streets and a separate multi-year plan for the arterial streets. The example there is Broadway, which we did in 2023. It kind of spans multiple, multiple pavement zones and multiple districts as shown in this map. And that's why it's kind of on its own scale. And so methodology of this, our management program is, you know, the work is concentrated in zones and it's based on a cycle. The cycle is detailed in that table on the bottom there. And so routine maintenance proceeds preventative maintenance by one year and preventative proceeds corrective by one year. And not every street receives a treatment in any given year. But this is just kind of a general plan. And if a street is in dire need of maintenance and is outside the current zone, we wouldn't wait to complete that work. We would do it as it's needed. This is just a slide to show some proposed requested funding over the next five years. Not too much to mention here. You'll see in 2028, I believe, the, the funding or the request increases by about 8% to account for inflation. But I do want to show this slide just to mention that Megan's going to talk a little bit about a program that we use to predict the future with these programs or with these streets. And this is the funding that we used in that predictive model.
OpenGov Enterprise Asset Management, EAM, previously known as Cartograph, is the software that helps us manage our transportation and infrastructure assets in Public Works. It also serves as our computerized maintenance management system, CMMS, to manage and optimize maintenance operations, tracking labor, equipment and materials needed to complete these repair activities. EAM was implemented in Public Works in June of 2021. So this came online about the same time that our first pavement survey was collected. Shortly after our pavement, this was not just a pavement tool, but it can help us manage other assets such as sidewalks, traffic signs, stormwater inlets, et cetera. Most recently, Parks and Recreation has also started utilizing OpenGov in their workflows. Scenario Builder is a tool that is within OpenGov, EAM, that helps us plan and manage our assets by creating what-if scenarios, comparing different repair activities to see how different strategies can extend the life of our assets. Using the Scenario Builder tool, we can forecast how work is prescribed while our budgets are met and we can set performance goals over time. Scenario Builder takes into consideration the degradation rate of assets, the date the asset was installed or its age, the impact of different maintenance activities and inspections like this pavement survey. This model can then help us identify the right maintenance activities at the right time to extend the life of our assets.
So using Scenario Builder, we're able to, using Scenario Builder with, with the funding, proposed funding from the last five, or for the next five years, we're able to predict that the inventory will stay between 70 and 75, average OCI over the next five years. This is a prediction, not a promise. So we're not 100% sure that will happen. But it is, it is good that we have over 70. I think most cities, not only in the surrounding area, but around the nation, go for a 70 as their, as their goal. And so we believe that's a good goal for us as well. So anyways, the future needs, so the pavement surveys will be needed in the future. We, we recommend that we do a survey about every three years. It will help us recalibrate our prediction model, that degradation curve I mentioned earlier. And also help us make sure that we account for variables such as weather and traffic volumes and unforeseen deterioration, finding those, you know, roadways that are deteriorating quicker than the others. And so this matters because continued monitoring and model updates are critical to making data-driven decisions and optimizing our maintenance strategies.
Okay, so in conclusion, as mentioned in your council communications, this particular pavement survey project does align with the city's strategic plan. Asset management as a whole is a very powerful tool that helps the city achieve its strategic goals. By proactively maintaining infrastructure, it enhances safety, supports reliable transportation and strengthens our local economy. It also promotes transparent governance, fosters community engagement and improves overall well-being. Most importantly, asset management ensures that our resources are used sustainably, which benefits current residents, visitors and commuters alike.
And that is the end of our presentation. So we'll open it up for questions or comments.
Very good. Thank you for Kyle and Megan for the presentation. And I'll go to Member Ward first.
I have a couple of questions. The first is that one of the staff recommendations is to complete a survey every three years. But I don't see the cost of the survey here. What, do you know what it costs us to do the complete survey in a year?
I believe it was 25,000. Is that correct?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can find it for you.
If that ballpark figure is even in the neighborhood, it's not a significant percentage of what we're spending compared to what we're spending doing road maintenance, which was my concern. I don't want, you know, looking to cost repairing. Does that make sense? I, I don't know, I probably could have articulated that better, but if it's not costing us what, a significant amount of what we would be spending repairing roads, I don't have an issue with it. Or with the frequency, for that matter. My second question is, it occurs to me as I, as I look at this, my quality of life is more likely to be adversely affected if I live on one of those very poor roads, or I have to commute across one of those very poor roads. And I see the philosophy here being a zone-based philosophy. My question is, have we considered just working to eliminate the very poor condition across the city in a, in a season, as opposed to sticking with the zone-based philosophy, and then moving back to the zone-based philosophy in the next year, once we have managed to eliminate those very poor roads from our, our town?
We kind of do that now, when, when, when a roadway is needed to be replaced or, or milled and overlaid. If it's not in the zone, we will do it, we'll, we do the outliers. So we, we try to do that now somewhat.
Okay, so it's, it must not be possible to prevent a road from reaching that condition, then? Because I look at the 2020, I, I look at the two maps and I still see red. Like the 2021 versus 2024, both of them have very poor-conditioned roads. Is it just a matter of not being able to do that in a three-year period, or is it a matter of doing what we can to fix the very poor roads, and then the next year, we see roads that have degraded down to very poor?
The roads will degrade at different rates, depending on the functional classification, especially. That can be due to the different traffic that is on the road, the traffic volumes and so forth. We try to kind of spread the love, making it around to all the zones, and sometimes being able to mobilize our contractors to one segment or just one smaller area, when they can get a lot more work done. If they concentrate in one zone, it might be more difficult and more costly for them to bring all their workers, all of their equipment across town to kind of chase bits and pieces that do need repair. It is on the radar that there are a few areas of concern, and so depending on what type of maintenance that we can prescribe, that also plays into how much we are spending. So something like a slurry seal is not going to cost nearly as much as a full reconstruct. So we might be able to get a lot more work done and be able to improve several more roads by how much slurry seal we can do, but if we reconstruct just two ro, two roads, that takes away from the slurry seal budget.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Also, I thank you for the presentation. Did, in the survey, did they cover every single street in Inglewood?
Yes, every street was at least two passes, so in each direction, minimum.
Okay, and so, I mean, when I looked at the truck and it just had this narrow thing, I'm assuming that there are video cameras on there, so it sees more of the whole air area in front of it?
Yes, absolutely, and we've actually have worked with this same consulting firm, AGW, in the past for doing our right-of-way inventory for other assets as well, including pavement, pavement markings, and then also our traffic signs and the sign supports. And then recently, we also had them collect our concrete assets, including sidewalks, crosspans, alley paths and such.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I too would be interested in the cost of, of what it costs to do that. I did, I have one other question. So like the mill and overlay, how far down, I'm, I'm assuming, I mean, when I was a lot younger, I mean, I was, it was, I was probably in high school, maybe, they redid the street that I lived on, and they took it down eight inches from, is that what mill and overlay is, or sometimes it doesn't go that far down?
Uh, no, the mill and overlay typically goes down two inches and then replaces two inches. In some cases, we need to take more if it's, in the past, occasionally, they wouldn't mill, they would just overlay. And so if, if there's, if the mill, or, sorry, if the overlay is affecting the curb, then potentially we'll need to mill more than two inches, but typically, we mill two inches and overlay two inches.
Okay, I appreciate that. Two years ago, when I was campaigning, I was up in the northwest corner of Inglewood, and they had milled all the streets, and there was one street, it was probably this far below the gutter, but there was dirt underneath it, there was no road base or anything. And so I'm assuming they blacktopped it, and it's probably not going to last very long. Is that correct?
We have methods of determining if we need to do patching below the, after we mill, and so they take a, a truck that has a lot of weight in it, and they drive it over the surface, and if, if the surface deflects, then, then we'll do road-based patching in that area. But if it doesn't flex, then the idea is that it's strong enough to carry any, any load, because the, the truck that we drive over it is much heavier than normal traffic.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Member Nunacamp.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question about a specific street. It looks like University, we have a portion of University that we're responsible as an arterial in our map, is that correct?
Yes.
And it looks like in the, from the previous 2021 survey to the current, it's still rated poor in both of those. Just curious how we are collaborating with our municipal partners to the north and to the south, especially closing down University for some of that work? How do we approach something like that, and when might work on University fall? Is it part of just the zones, or is it separate because of how it's connected with other cities?
I would assume that would be separate, and, and it would, we would probably rely on the City of Denver. When they, when they do their program, we would have an IGA with them to pay for our portion of, of University. When they mill and overlay that, we'll, we'll tag on to that as well.
And does that mean that we would just contribute financially, or do our crews go out and do our portion, or do they have one crew that does the entire thing and we just resource it?
We would contribute financially.
Okay. And what if their update, or their system of when they will do those updates doesn't match when we would want to do our updates? Do we just wait for them to be the kind of proactive member in that partnership? I'm trying to get a sense of how we think about that timing.
I'll, Director Rochelle will take that one.
Okay, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor, or?
Evening.
Good evening, yes. Victor Rochelle, Director of Public Works. A great question. So we collaborate with our adjacent jurisdictions to make sure we're not doubling down and kind of going over each other. That includes Denver, Cherry Hills, and Sheridan. Just as an example, we're currently collaborating with Cherry Hills on Clarkston. They would like to pave Clarkston. We have LED service in Clarkston. We are sharing our ratings with them, so we try and communicate with our partners in our adjacent jurisdictions to make sure, one, our ratings align, and, two, that we're on the same target. When we go to pave those streets, we'll collaborate and look at who's got the best pricing and go through an IGA process, as Kyle mentioned, from a funding perspective, so that only one contractor's out there, and we don't have two contractors on, one on each side of the road.
Appreciate that was my other question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions, and the first one is just about the company that we use, AGW, was that, who was? Is that, did we use them for the survey in 2021, or are they a new company for this particular project?
No, we did not use AGW in 2021. The 2021 survey was collected by a company called IMS, and they, I believe, are out of Arizona. So their pricing, just to mobilize, come here, do the collection and the work for us, would be a little bit more. AGW being, as I said, very local, have been wonderful to work with. This is not our first, nor will it be our last project to work with them. They have been really responsive with all of our questions.
And how do we know that their, you know, the, the, the rating process is, how standardized is it between these different companies? And, and how do they, are they comparing samples, or how do we know that it's, it's accurate? Are we just going with, you know, ballpark hopefully?
Sure, so their, their, their collection is to ASTM International Standards. Oh, gosh. I tried to, yeah, it's International American Standards. But, so that is kind of just for any of these type of survey collections. That's going to follow the same type of collection methods as well. We did go out, a couple of our engineers, to a couple streets and say, hey, you know, this score maybe wasn't what we were expecting. And since they are so local and have been so helpful, they were able to come out and say, well, yeah, if you look here and, and look at this, and be able to explain what all of the different components and how everything is scored, to make up the OCI that was, then given for that pavement score. We were able to understand what they were collecting and come to agreement that, yes, this seems like you've collected this correctly.
Yeah. The reason I ask is because I, I'm, I think our, our streets are generally improving in the city. I mean, I think since we've been investing more in it over the last several years. But when I look, when I compare the 2021 with the 62 and the 73, it looks like everything across the city has universally improved, and that kind of makes me go, is that really accurate? Now, when Councilmember Russell mentioned up on the hill, where, you know, they, sure, they went through and milled and overlaid a whole bunch of streets at the same time and see that level of improvement, but then I look at like some streets in my neighborhood, which I'm more familiar with, and I know there hasn't been any mill or overlay, any slurry seal on any of those streets, but there's a number that were poor in 2021 that are showing as fair. And I just question, you know, like, and, and I wonder if the utility is mostly in the fact that you're comparing the streets as they are now, and there's a lot of the utility, but I'm just a little concerned that maybe everywhere, it's not 100% accurate. It sounded like you guys had, or not, not 100% standardized between the two measurements. I know my street was, I found it on here, it was poor in 2021, and it's showing as fair now, and not really a lot has been done to it, so I want to be careful that we're not, you know, just over, getting overexcited about the level of, the level of improvement that's going on and still paying attention to potentially some poor streets. So is that, do you, do you have any question, or, or like, do you see those, what's the utility, I guess, in comparing the two years, if maybe there's some variation there?
Yeah, so mill and overlay and reconstruct and slurry seal are not the only activities that will make an impact on our pavement.
Sure.
So even something simple as like sending our street crews out to fix potholes, maybe doing some of the more minor crack sealing can also slightly improve our street. Those areas between fair and poor, and, and there's a lot of where it kind of gets, yeah, exactly, it can be kind of a gray area where you might be able to score something better or worse, but overall, we feel that we are getting pretty consistent results.
Yeah.
But also remember that there are other impacts, activities that can be happening, even if there is a utility patch. If it's on a poor street, that patch might be the best improvement yet. So there are different things that can impact the pavement scores.
And that's, that was one of my other questions, is with all of the, the patching going on from the LED service lines, are we expecting, what impact do we expect that to have on these scores over ti, I mean, I would, I, yeah, that may be better in one part, but it also, you know, introduces a new cut in the street.
Right.
Is that going to degrade the quality of the street?
Right.
Over time, anyway? What, what do we expect the impact of that to be?
Yeah, and that is a, a very good reason why it is that we want to be able to revisit and resurvey routinely, because in some areas, the patches, you know, if it's on a poor street, hey, yeah, great that we got a nice patch in, but some of the areas where there is maybe different traffic volumes or just different street use, those patches, yeah, might be degrading, but that is something that we will be able to evaluate over time with future surveys.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from council?
Well, thank you, Megan, thank you, Kyle, and thanks Director Rochelle for the presentation. And with that, we will take a 10-minute break, come back at 7:32. And with that, we will take a 10-minute break, come back at 7:32. All right, it looks like we're all back, so go ahead and get started here. We're on to Agenda Item 4A. Our, we have Director of Finance Kevin Ingles here to provide us with a monthly financial report. Go ahead, Kevin.
Good evening, council. Kevin Ingles, Director of Finance. We're going to look at, we provided you the May and June reports in your packet. We're only going to present June because it's the most current information. So we're halfway through the year. Overall revenues are just above halfway through. See there in the bottom, in the middle there, 51.6%. So we're doing pretty well. Property tax is down a little bit. That's because we received a one-time payment from the state last year that was meant to offset some of the legislation that reduced our property tax collections a little bit. Otherwise, we'd be right even with last year's collections. Sales and use tax, we're down slightly for the year. If you remove the marijuana from that calculation, we're actually up just a little bit for the year, so. Most of our shortfall is due to the marijuana reduction, and we're seeing that throughout the region. The big increase here is licenses and permits. We had the one very large permit that came in in June, so that is actually making up most of our increase for the year overall as well. Like I mentioned, we're at 51.6% compares to about 51% last year, and overall up about $1 million for the year. Expenditures, once again, doing pretty well there. We're just a little bit below year-to-date budget at 48.7%. Just about every department is within budget. Legislation, they're top. They have some dues and fees at the beginning of the year that they don't pay. Again, you'll notice last year, it was the same type of breakdown for them. Same scenario with information technologies. They pay a lot of their contracts at the beginning of the year, but don't pay those again. So as the year goes on, those will, should drop back below budget. Overall, at just about 49% of budget, 3.7% increase versus last year. Here's the breakdown of expenditures by category. Nothing really out of ordinary here. Operating surplus or deficit, we are currently at about $1 million surplus, fairly comparable to last year, which was 1.3 million surplus. No change in transfers from the last report. So here's your fund balance composition. Overall, for 2025, the net change in fund balance is a reduction of 1.2 million. 2.2 million of that is transfers out for capital, and then you see our operating surplus there of just over a million. Drop that down, and reporting at the middle of your range, which is 16.7%, you've got about 11.8 million in reserve and still with an unassigned fund balance of about 3.3 million. Before I turn it over to questions, there is one item on this slide I wanted to ask council about. We have two small restricted amounts in there. One is for the long-term asset reserve, that 95,000. And we also have the 182,000 that is from the stadium refund. If council is agreeable, we would like to include those as part of the 26 budget proposal that we've been bringing forward and remove those restrictions. So I just wanted to see if you had any feedback on that.
Thank you, Director Ingles. Councilmember Newt Camp.
I have a question about the stadium district. I think the L-TAR, I'm fine sweeping it into the general fund. Were we waiting on any additional projects to come back from Parks and Rec to use the rest of the stadium? I know we used the train, talked about it. Can you just refresh my memory on where we left that?
Good question, Councilmember Newt Camp. Christina Underhill, Director of Parks, Recreation, Library and Golf. The final proposal we put together was a lot of programming items versus capital. With the bond passing, we have a lot of our capital needs being addressed through that. If council had anything specific, capital-wise or even program-wise, they really wanted us to spend the funds on, we could move forward with that. Initially, we proposed things like swim lessons or scholarship programs for kids to get into some of our programs.
Thank you for the update. I would still like to see capital recommendations for those funds, since they were restricted for that purpose. But if staff has a compelling reason why we should sweep it in, I'm open to hearing that. I'd feel fine with the later fund, but that's my perspective on the stadium fund.
Member Ward.
I'm a strong supporter of retiring the long-term asset reserve. Not that we wouldn't bring it back in the event that we disposed of some sort of asset, but right now, having that money sitting there, I've thought for the last four years is just unnecessarily confusing the budget, so let's find a place to put that money. As far as the stadium is concerned, I'm indifferent. I don't have a problem retiring that fund as long as we are able to ensure that we spend the money how we're supposed to, and we don't end up answering any awkward questions at a later date.
I'm fine with sweeping both of those, using them for their proper purposes, but pulling those into the budget for 2026 as well. Member Russell.
Thank you. Especially the stadium funds, if there was some conditions that came with that money, we need to make certain that we're following that. The long-term asset reserve, I don't think it's messing up our budget, it's just a number sitting there. And I think I'm okay with just leaving it there the way it is, and then if we get rid of an asset, then it can go in that fund as well. Thank you.
Member Prig.
I'm fine with staff recommendation.
All right, any other questions on the monthly financial report?
Mayor, can, excuse me, Mayor Protam, may I just make a statement and confirm it with Christina, but the Director Underhill? But the stadium funds were not restricted to capital, it was youth program services, but we've kind of tried to focus on capital locally, right?
That is correct, yes.
Good. I'm Member Newt Camp.
And just to put a fine point on it, so that you can get to four, so you have actual direction, I'm fine if we sweep these into the budget, again, as long as they, if there are capital things that we would want to do for youth services that we can put in the budget, that's fine with me. I just want to make sure that we're actually tracking that, it doesn't just fall into the pot and where we lose track of it.
And we would maintain that restriction. We just want to, would like to include it in the 2026 conversation.
That's great, I'm fine to get rid of both of them.
All right. Thank you, Director Ingles. Thank you, Director Underhill.
Thank you.
And now our last information item for the night, we have our 2025 mid-year capital projects review for the capital improvement plan. And we have with us Director Finance Kevin Ingles, Budget and Financial Analyst Tyson Thornburg, and leadership team members to present on various capital projects. Director Ingles, take it away.
Good evening again, council. Joining me tonight is our Budget and Financial Analyst Tyson Thornburg. This is the status update for the capital projects for the city, and I'm going to turn it over to Tyson, and he's going to walk you through what we're going to look at this evening, and then we'll turn it over to departments to present their capital projects.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protam, and members of council. So this is our agenda tonight, so we'll go over briefly the purpose of this meeting and presentation, and then we will also briefly go over our C I P spending review process before turning it over to departments for review of their capital projects. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide an overview of capital projects and a 2025 mid-year status update for each project. Each project update will include the project timeline status, the project's anticipated completion date, any issues regarding why projects may be delayed or not started, the balance of appropriated funds, any additional resource needs, and then any related ARPA funding. And then we're also seeking feedback on what information council would like to see in the mid-year project status update report, and then whether or not the timing of this report in July works best for council. So this table shows the list of our major capital funds, as well as the departments who have oversight over those funds. And then this is an overview of our capital process, capital review process. We're currently on step three, the mid-year capital review, and then our next touchpoint with council will be in August, on August 11th, for our proposed capital budget for 2026. So the next couple of slides just show the Inglewood Municipal Charter citations for capital and capital project funding. And I will turn it over to Amanda Arns from our Communications Department.
Just quickly go through our projects here. The first one is our wayfinding and place making fund, and we have five new community signs in the works. The bridge painting project was researched and will not proceed because of serious permitting challenges, so we're working on using those funds to support some gateways, structures, primary gateways, and one included on Dartmouth and Inca. The historic preservation projects, we've installed the historic signs in downtown Inglewood and the city center, and the wellness districts have been created, and we're finalizing the installation of those signs, and that will wrap up that project. Our public wraps and crosswalks, public art wraps and crosswalks. We did three more traffic wraps earlier this year with an additional call later this fall for, I think, five to seven more traffic wraps. And then the C A C is looking into other alternatives to incorporate public art and safety elements. The creative crosswalks are cost prohibitive with the installation costs that have just skyrocketed and the life cycle of those crosswalks. We really want to make sure that we're utilizing those funds for something that'll last a little bit longer to make that worth that money. And then we have our neighborhood signs and design installation. So neighborhood signs are in the neighborhoods of Bellevue Park, Camden Hills, Old Town and Cushing Park, and applications have been received for multiple neighborhoods, and those are continuing with, I think, three or four more neighborhoods being installed this year. And then the last one on here is the access programming fees. We had a new video studio that's now complete, was just the grand opening this last week for our new studio, where we'll be able to do a lot of in-house video and production.
All right, questions for communications? Member Ward.
Regarding sidewalks, I'm unclear, because when I look at what the packet says, it says we're installing more, but I thought I just heard you say that we're not.
So the creative crosswalks, I had an update from what was in that, the packet. So we're working on longevity of our existing locations, and the Cultural Art Commission is conducting an assessment to identify necessary maintenance and rewrapping opportunities of those traffic cabinets. For the crosswalks, the rising cost of the crosswalks are making them increasingly difficult to justify for installation and ongoing maintenance. So the Cultural Arts Commission is trying to find innovative ways to utilize those funds to something that's maybe not as cost prohibitive as a crosswalk that we install, and then the next day a water line breaks and we're digging it up completely, undoing all that work and money that went into those crosswalks.
Okay, I'd be curious to know if there's a plan to rehab the existing ones to more traditional striping in that case, so that they don't just look like the lappedated, what used to be art?
Yes, I believe that would be part of the street maintenance program, as we're going through those, and I think there was the one on Camden and Broadway that was mentioned as well for update, the forks and spoons.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think we only have two of those that are creative, if you will, and the E D D A paid for the, for one of them, and then the forks and spoons, I do think just because they're not lasting very long, that we should probably just go back to a more traditional style, unfortunately.
All right, that's all the questions we have from council. Okay, up next, we have the Information Technology Department.
Good evening, I'm Joe Eisenbart, I'm the Director of I T. The first project I want to talk about is the fiber network project. There's 100,000 remaining in that budget. It was originally earmarked for a pre-feasibility study to look at the possibility of broadband services to the home. When we ran into the issues with our H R I S system, it was determined that we would put this project on hold pending, understanding how much that H R I S system would cost in the event that we would need to ask council to reallocate these funds, so this will remain So this will remain on hold until we understand the cost of the new HR system. The second, second one is the HRIS workforce management tool. This was initially developed to implement a new module to assist the UKG product with time and attendance and workforce management. Again, the project team determined that a full replacement of the system was necessary, and the plan would be to use this, these funds to begin that process of replacing the HRIS system. And lastly, we have the phone system replacement. Little bit of an update there, we are probably 90% complete on that. We expect to be complete with the rollout to our internal users by the end of, or by mid-August, I should say, and then there are a few other things that we need to do to wrap that project up, kiosks and gates and things of that nature. So we see that one as being completed within the next couple of months. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Don't see any questions from council. Thank you, Director Eisenbart.
All right, I'll turn it over to Police and Public Works. Thank you.
Dave Jack, Dave Jackson, Chief of Police.
And Victor Rochelle, Director of Public Works. All right, so up first is the Fox Building, so Public Works completed the roof replacement on the Fox Building earlier this year. We're currently in the Phase Two, which is the renovate the inside of the building, and we're currently working with an architect, making sure we're in compliance with expectations from the Police Department on the use of the facility, and then making sure we meet all proper fire codes based on that use, and those plans are currently in design.
And the second item is our patrol car MDTs, which is the in-car, I want to say camera, the in-car computer system that are inside the cars which were installed last month. And just to give a shout out to Joe and his team, getting that done in a 24-hour cycle where the cars are being used all the time, they did a really great job, so we.
Any questions from council for Police Chief or Public Works? None, thank you, Chief Jackson and Director Rochelle. Director Underhill.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council. All right, we have a few projects. The Culture Arts Commission, we have $10,000 in our CTF fund for art that is underway. We have an artist selected, and that will be put in place at the Inglewood Recreation Center. There'll be a mural going in there. Bates Logan, Phase One, Two, and Three is finally complete, and the park is reopened. We're in warranty work right now and kind of punchless items, so if you see dead trees out there, or bushes, or anything else, we are addressing those and getting those replaced. And then ERC upgrades, so we're in the final phase of this. This is just about finished. Any unused funds will be returned to the fund balance. Little Dark Creek at the Plaza, so we're working with the EDDA to update our design. I do want to correct that the expense is only $30,000, not $300,000 for design work. And so we're planning on going into construction after a lot of public feedback and EDDA's inputs in 2026 for Phase One and 2027 for Phase Two. And then the Hampden Broadway medians, we did the first two medians on South Broadway. Those are complete. The total project cost for that was 171,000, so the full amount has not been charged yet, but that will be deemed complete here in the next month. And then for the golf course, the golf course asphalt is finished. That's replacing and repairing the cart paths to keep our golf courts from being damaged while driving around our golf course, and we did some work also in the parking lots. And then the pump station has been ordered and should be here this fall. We're waiting till the season cools off a little bit before we take the irrigation down and install the new pump. So those are the items that we have. Any questions?
Councilmember Newt Camp.
Just a couple of quick questions, thank you. For the CAC Public Art Fund, will that move to Communications next year in the budget since it's moved internally?
That one will, whatever is left will go to CAC, but ultimately, that's been budgeted for over a year now that we're going to put a mural in the rec center, so we'll bring that to CAC here in the next month or two.
Oh, I see, so this is not, this is just specifically for Parks and Rec Project, it's not the CAC.
Correct.
Art fund here, okay, sorry. And then my other question, I just wanted a clarity on the Broadway medians, which I love them, by the way, I think they look fantastic. Two are done, there's more to come. Is the total cost, you said it was, I think, like 171,000, is that including our anticipated costs, or is that what we've done so far?
The 171 is the contracted cost for the two medians, and then we have also requested through CIP next year another 200 to do two more medians.
Okay, so we do expect about a $30,000 cost savings there. Okay, thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you. So my question, I was over at Bates Logan Park yesterday, and on the east side of the park, closest to Bates, I don't know if they are skateboard courses over there, or bike courses, I don't know what they are, they're bike.
Bike, scooters, skateboard, if somebody chooses to, probably wouldn't recommend that.
Okay, so there's a bunch of just dirt area around those that there's weeds growing. Is that, is that gonna be dirt, or?
That's a great question, and no, that's not the plan to leave it dirt. We are trying to grow in some native seed there. We were, we are working with a company here in Colorado that has done this for other parks successfully. It typically takes one to three years for that to come in. Yes, it looks like a lot of weeds right now, and that's what we're working with the company on. How do we maintain that? We're also working with CSU to train our staff to identify a weed versus a native or drought tolerant plant, so that will not always remain dirt. That should be filled in with some native, and if it doesn't take, we'll put sod in there.
Okay, and I just, and also, it goes over to like the basketball court also, correct?
Correct, yeah, the whole east side is supposed to be kind of our new native area. It's trying something out through the grant process to be a little bit more sustainable and eventually reduce irrigation use. But again, this is our first project with a native, we'll see how it goes. We have experts behind us helping us out, so we hope it does work, but like I said, if it doesn't, we'll go back to just regular turf.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Director Underhill.
And up next is Public Works with Director Rochelle.
All right, good evening again. So jumping right in, Dartmouth Bridge, we have wrapped that up. Did recently come forward with a budget supplemental. We are negotiating with the contractor on a few outstanding items, and we're waiting for that to wrap up before closing out the project. We'll see that come to a close here shortly. Walk and Wheel, we have the rail trail plans completed, those are wrapping up, and we are looking to implement additional grant funding opportunities and use those to continue that project, designing beyond 30% and hunt for funding to continue the project into late this year and next year. Dartmouth Avenue Traffic Calming, East Dartmouth Avenue Traffic Calming, that is. Plans are roughly 95% complete, and we're working to obtain temporary construction easements before going to bid and bidding, actually, not in the summer, this is going to be late fall is the current anticipated timeframe for bidding. We need to have those easements secured before we go out to bid on any kind of construction documents, so that is the next step there, with some design revisions, coordinating with RTD, making sure that those are all accommodated into the design itself. Downtown overhead street lighting, this project and this funding, we're coordinating with EDDA to see if there's an opportunity to collaborate there, utilizing their plan for Bro, excuse me, Broadway, and combining forces there to add additional lighting in that stretch. South Broadway Complete Streets, the ITB has been issued, and we're expecting bids back shortly, so in the next couple of weeks, we'll have those bids back, which will inform next steps in funding for the project. Old Hampden Complete Streets, that project is moving forward, we're wrapping up the utilities portion of that now, this is the Complete Streets section. We do anticipate that to wrap up design and be out to bid in the December timeframe, with the goal of getting all the utilities out of the way so that we don't cause traffic control issues by shutting down multiple blocks on either side and boxing either hospital. West Dartmouth Multimodal, we are wrapping up final documentation on that project, so this is west of South Platte, and expect that to come forward for council in Q3, Q4 this year. We do have some right-of-way and property rights we need to obtain for traffic signal modifications. Those discussions are underway right now as we speak. And again, once those are done, we'll be advancing that project out to bid in advance construction. We are also working with the PUC, we have to cross several train tracks, even though we're not doing substantial modifications, the Public Utilities Commission, the PUC is in charge of all rail crossings, and we're coordinating those modifications with the PUC. Hawk Signal Design, that has been completed, the design, and we are getting it out to bid now, and we'll get those bids back in approximately 30 to 45 days for that to start. Union Avenue Bridge, we are on track for completion of those design plans in Q3 of this year, and that is for rehabilitating the top deck of the Union Avenue Bridge. Oxford Avenue Pet Bridge, as you hopefully have seen in the newsletters and maybe had the chance to drive by, they're under construction. They're currently working on the south side, next to the apartments, getting the footings ready to go in. We did have a minor delay in working with RTD, those communications and needs have all been worked out, and the project is now advancing full steam ahead. Union Avenue Repaving, we saw a slight delay there due to subsurface utility investigations that needed to be done. As we talked a little bit about in the paving presentation, the pavement section is highly driven by the axle loading and the usage on those streets. Union Avenue from Santa Fe to the bridge, and maybe even a little beyond the bridge to the west, it gets a lot of truck traffic. You got waste management, there's a concrete pumping company, lot of industrial uses there. We are, the design is to fully rebuild that section of Union Avenue, and as such, making sure we did a subsurface utility investigation to check the depths of the utilities as we rebuild and make sure there's no conflicts. We wanted to make sure that was done correctly and addressed all the needs before getting out to bid, so that's now been completed, and we're advancing the ITB with that coming out in late Q3. I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Newt Camp.
Thank you for the update. For Dartmouth Traffic Calming, we are going to go out to bid in late summer. This shows the project still being completed this year, I'm guessing that's not accurate?
Correct, yeah, it won't be out late summer, it'll be late fall before we go out to bid.
So, right, so what is the end date of the project? The project, I think it still shows 2025 on the slide we have, which I don't, if we're not even bidding until fall.
Correct. That's right, it will not be completed till late '26.
Late '26, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Russell.
Thank you for the update. I too had a question about the Dartmouth Traffic Calming, and you said something about easements. Are they easements in the road, like easements with perhaps XL Energy?
Based on the current design, they are temporary construction easements to reestablish. There are some minor retaining walls, and we have to tie some grades back, so they're, at the moment, they're not anticipated to be right-of-way takes, they're temporary construction easements so we can restore what's there on private property.
Okay, so if, if in the course of doing that, we find out that we may need to acquire some land, then that would extend it also, correct?
It could potentially, hopefully, all those should be identified through the design process.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And then I had something else also about the, oh, the Union Avenue Repaving, I had a question about that from a citizen yesterday, because the road is really in bad shape, Union Avenue, do we, do we charge, like, do the tipping fees pay for road improvements? Or do we have anything that we charge those commercial companies on Union?
So I'll defer to Director Ingles, but I don't believe there's a direct correlation of tipping fees or other fees that go straight into paving on that roadway frontage. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, I think the tipping fees go to the general fund?
They do go to the general fund, and then there's no direct tie with the actual wear and tear on that section of road.
They're not necessarily, so, and this person that I was talking to was fairly upset about how bad that road is, and how much the wear and tear on that road is by the commercial companies, and they were concerned that the taxpayers of Inglewood shouldn't be paying those fees. And I think that's maybe something that we need to consider also. So that's, I mean, I did get my question answered, because I knew we were charging them tipping fees, but I didn't know what the tipping fees were for.
And Member Russell, can I ask Director Finance what that total is this year? Do you know on tipping fees, because we're not proposing an increase in that, are we?
We increased last year, and we'll look at it again to increase next year. We try to keep that in line with inflation. I believe it's around $800,000 a year that we collect on that.
So I do think probably initially that some of those fees were, you know, for the cost of the trash that's, you know, on for the wear and tear on the roads, but certainly if council would like to look at an increased fee, it's totally your prerogative. They typically, the company just passes that on, you know, to consumers, but if we feel like, you know, the cost of repairing this road, I mean, you're looking at the dollar amount there, you know, should be higher, we can absolutely look at increasing that again.
Either that, or we need to dedicate the $800,000 totally to fixing the road and not using it in the general fund.
Right.
So, all right, thank you very much.
Member Ward.
I'm curious about the Oxford Pet Bridge, because we just broke ground on it, but when I look at the budget numbers, the actual spend shows 2.725 million. We haven't paid the contractor for that yet. Is it because it's encumbered?
It's because it's encumbered, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I don't think we've received our first pay request yet. Coming, I'm sure.
Thank you.
All right, continuing to Fund 31 here, so the badge system, we have solicited bids, selected a contractor, and we'll be coming to council as soon as possible for an award on that, and so that is the badge system across all city facilities, not just Civic Center, but that's PD, ERC, and other facilities there, so that we can bring that in-house. Our current system is relatively outdated, that's being nice, and we're completely reliant on the vendor to modify our badge system and some of the other parameters, so bringing that in-house and bringing it up to the latest and greatest is going to be a huge improvement for the city when it comes to security. ADA Audit, Public Works is currently coordinating with the city attorney's office when it comes to the ADA audit to make sure that we are appropriately addressing transition plan needs, and we expect that draft report to come out in late Q3 or Q4 of this year. Backup generators, we are currently pursuing backup generators at the service center. We're working with manufacturers and electrical engineers to make sure that the drawings and specifications match our current electrical system, including panel upgrades that we'll have to do at the service center. The energy efficiency pilot, as you're aware, we're continuing to work with Year Out Energy, and we'll be coming forward with some additional financing questions and consideration for council at the next council meeting. Any questions on Fund 31 projects?
Seeing none, thank you, Director Rochelle. Oh, more.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep going.
Keep going.
So more focused on drainage, so we have the South Inglewood Drainage Plan, again, this is a mile-high flood district, 50/50 IGA. My High Flood District is managing the project and the additional amendment for budget in 2025, which is in Uh, so, uh, more focused on drainage. So we have the South Englewood Drainage Plan. Again, this is a Maui Flood District fifty fifty IGA. Maui Flood District is, uh, managing the project, um, and the additional amendment for budget in twenty twenty-five, which is in the Stormwater Fund Budget for twenty twenty-five, will be coming forward to council for consideration in August, September. Uh, the Dry Gulch, Harvard Gulch Master Plan, Maui Flood District is working on an RFP for their consultant, uh, to get that going. And we'll be coming forward to city council again for matching funds out of the Stormwater Enterprise in the September, our August, September timeframe. South Englewood Stormwater Improvements, uh, we are substantially complete on that. We still have a few minor punchless items. Those are being buttoned up, which is fantastic. And those will all be addressed here in short order. And then we'll have some final invoicing coming through to close out that project. Old Hampden Utilities, uh, mentioned that a little while ago, but the phase one construction is well underway. Um, we did actually, this statement's a little old. We already brought the contract amendment, uh, I believe that was the last council meeting, uh, to extend the project further to the east. Uh, that was approved and we'll be moving into that next. Any questions on stormwater projects?
Don't see any.
Okay.
Oh, oh, sorry.
So you said we've, um, increased it to move the project further to the east?
Correct.
From, from Downing farther east or just where we're at right now?
Just where we're at right now. Correct. And, and then going back to Grant to do the pipe that was discovered during construction plus the inlet. We're all as part of the amendment that went forward last council meeting.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. No further questions. Uh, we'll jump into a couple of programs. So Kerbin Gutter, um, this project and contract was just approved by council. Uh, we're having a kickoff meeting, so that'll get going. And then our sidewalk repair was also part of that same program and contract, uh, approved on the twenty-first. So that's, uh, getting going as well. And that's it on concrete utility. Any questions on concrete utility?
Councilmember Russell?
Thank you. Um, I also ran into somebody today. I've run into a lot of people this week. Um, it was concrete repair that happened a couple of years ago and I think that she was told that they would replace it and they haven't done it yet. And it is between forty-four oh nine and forty-four eleven South Bannock Street.
I'm sorry, the second number is forty-four eleven?
Yeah, forty-four oh nine and forty-four eleven. It's the, there's some sections in between those two.
Okay. I will follow up with the team on those locations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No more questions there.
All right, Service Center. Uh, so Service Center, uh, building upgrades. Um, so we have added, uh, power to our traffic building, which does two things for us. It allows us to have additional lights and also some, uh, heaters. This is a kind of a Quadsat hut in the back of the building. So we're able to plug in vehicles and keep block heaters warm in the winter, uh, as well as do other work back there with power now. Uh, we do have other things, uh, to be done on the site, but that was the one that's completed at the moment. We are also looking at some upgrades per the energy audit to the facility. That's it on the Service Center.
Councilmember Russell, you have another question on that? Nope. Okay. All right. I think that's, that was your last one.
Think that's, yeah, that was my last one.
All right. Thank you, Director Rochelle. Thank you. Looks like we have Director Van Ryan, Deputy Director Stone. Thank you, Mayor Protom and Council. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to provide an update tonight and, uh, we'll get right through this. I've got Director Stone or Deputy Director Stone on me as well in case there's any more specific questions that, uh, on the finances that she can address. Okay, we'll run through these. So, um, more strategically, just want to remind everyone of, of what we're, what the strategic plan is for the, the financials of the, of the utilities department. And so we're in, we're right in the middle there. We're in, this is the mountain graph. We're in the middle. Um, and so we're figuring out how we're executing all that funding and, and executing the projects associated with it. And as I remind, uh, have reminded council before, those pink areas and that light blue area, those are our gaps that we've closed a significant number of those gaps. And then we still have the issue in about twenty thirty-one that we have to figure out, but we have six years to figure it out. Uh, we look at this, uh, um, through budget forecasting. So you can see our, um, how we actually forecast all of our projects. These are some of our tools. And so this is what we, uh, we talked about last time as it relates for individual projects. So, um, our first project is, uh, Space Improvement Phase One, and this project has been underway for a few years and we are in project closeout right now and, uh, should be, uh, finishing out the contract here shortly. Uh, the, the blower modifications were part of that project and so that, the seven hundred thousand dollars was specifically to replace the blower because we're in the same area and we needed to move some of the piping. And so that is also complete as well. We're just in project closeout. Our Space Improvements Phase Two, this is the work at the Allen Water Treatment Plant and the Service Center, and our projects are out to bid right now. Um, they are coming in a bit higher than we had originally anticipated. Uh, we'll get the second bid here in about a month. And then we'll look to package the two, probably package the two projects together. We haven't quite decided what we're gonna do yet on it, um, to, to move forward with the project. Initially, we had moved forward, we were moving forward with this project as a CMGC. So, uh, construction manager, general contractor, the, uh, collaborative delivery model. And the pricing came in, uh, significantly higher. We've gone out to bid and the, this is where bidding does oftentimes drive us better results. And the pricing has come down by nearly forty to fifty percent, between forty and fifty percent. So, we knew we weren't getting good pricing from the CMGC model. So we abandoned it, moved forward with just regular, um, uh, design bid build. And so that's what we're, that's how we're executing this project. Uh, the Allen Water Treatment Plant E I N C program, that's a programmatic, uh, project. The most recent of these projects that we've completed is the, uh, Allen Water Treatment Plant Electrical Improvements. Um, and so that's where we pulled some, took some old overhead power lines, ran them underneath, uh, built some new junction boxes. When I say junction boxes, big junction boxes, um, and modernized just some, some, um, connections that were just out in the weather and, and just really old. Um, but we continue, continually invest in our MCCs, our, um, PLCs, which is programmable, programmable logic control systems. Um, and that's just an ongoing, uh, programmatic approach to ultimately get to a point where we've, uh, updated all those over the next few years. Salads Handling Improvement Project, the centrifuge is being installed as we speak. Uh, we anticipate, uh, startup and commissioning occurring in August, September timeframe. And then the dredge should arrive in November. And so that'll modernize our, our system as it relates to, um, solids handling. Denver Water Interconnects, uh, we are to the point where we are moving forward with the construction on this one. This is one of our most important projects from a resiliency perspective, and, uh, it's coming in a bit higher than we expected by two million dollars. And so part of that is because of some of the more specific requirements, uh, put forth by Denver Water. Additionally, we have to use Denver Water contractors. So they have a short list of contractors that they work with. That's the only contractors we can use for this. We sent it out to their list of contractors and, uh, uh, took the best bid out of, out of their contractors. But we'd originally only anticipated three and a half million for this. So we're, we'll, um, we'll pull two million more from WIFIA funds as part of that, um, shifting around the, the use of the WIFIA programmatic fund. So what it means, we'll do a little bit less under WIFIA that we had originally anticipated in order to execute this project, which like I said, is one of the most important projects that we have. Um, this is basically our backup if something goes wrong with the plant. Um, right now, if something goes wrong with the plant, we're in trouble. If we have these in place, something goes wrong with the plant, we have an emergency connection that we can, um, utilize. AMI, uh, we just extended this contract and no cost extension, uh, through February to complete out the remaining, um, project budget and project itself. And then we'll have a phase two that'll come along and the phase two is generally around a couple thousand of, of installations. We've already bought the meters, we've bought the senders, we, we have all the equipment. The, the two thousand will come into phase two is actually the really complicated ones where it's, where it's not an easy change out of an installation. There's, might be, there's, there's any number of issues that could make it more challenging. And so we're, we're moving through all the, the easiest, the easy to execute ones. We'll close out this contract and then we'll work with an installer to work on those more complicated ones. Clarkson and Ham, uh, Hampden Booster Pump Station, uh, this is on hold until we, uh, get through the old Hampden project. So we're just waiting until, uh, we get that done and then we can work on this project. Hold the Hampden Utilities, uh, it's underway. Um, Victor talked about this. We're underway on this project. Um, and, uh, we've seen a few different construction issues that we're working through right now, but, um, anticipate that we'll, uh, be getting through this, uh, here in the next, uh, couple of months. City Ditch Piping, we did the project kickoff on this one on, uh, July eighth. We will start with working outside the ditch until November first, when we shut the ditch off, and then we'll get them, um, working in the ditch right away itself for fa, or for, uh, phases three and four. Lead Reduction Program is moving forward, um, extremely well. We're at about forty percent complete. Based on our estimates, um, we are at, um, it's, it's, it's moving quite efficiently. We had originally anticipated this to be about a three-year program. Current pace, we may be done by the end of twenty twenty-six with all of the replacements. So this will remove, uh, the lead for all of our customers, um, that choose to allow us to remove it, um, in the, in the next little over a year. So that's a pretty amazing accomplishment for this, for the city to, to have that removed. And then South Platte Renew is a programmatic fifty fifty split, um, that actually we'll, we'll talk about in a little bit more detail next month at the joint council meeting in, in August. Questions from council for utilities? Seen none. I guess we move on to South Platte Renew. Yeah, and I have a, a, just a few quick updates on South Platte Renew. So O and M Complex, we're working through, working through issues with HVAC. We've been working through issues with HVAC on this for nine, ten months. And so we are still not done with this project because we're experiencing challenges with HVAC, but we are working with the contractor and the, uh, and the architect to get those fixed. And so we don't really, so it's, we're, we're not closing out any of the project until we're satisfied with the results. Uh, solids enhancement, uh, that's complete, actually came in under budget, which is, uh, which is good. Um, the digester daft MCC replacement, um, you'll notice in this one that there's, there's a remaining budget as, uh, as two point six five and then a budget request of one point five. Uh, so this one actually came in, um, substantially under what the original budget was because Joe Morissette, who's our E I N C manager at South Platte Renew, figured out how to package up two projects and actually make it significantly more efficient, uh, based on his understanding of the plant and, and how to actually execute these projects. So it's one of these situations where we have the master plan that identifies these projects. We move forward with these projects, but if we just follow what the master plan said without actually looking at it once we get to the project, then sometimes we'll, we'll not, we'll spend more money than we should. And he looked at this and came up with a way to much more efficiently execute the project, which saved more than a million dollars on the project, which is pretty impressive. Um, and then Head, Headworks near term, uh, is, is we're just, this is our, we're fixing Headworks right now to give it another fifteen years of useful life before we have to rebuild Headworks because that is the oldest building on the, uh, South Platte site. Member Noonakam.
Thank you for the thorough presentation as always. I'm actually gonna jump back to utilities for a quick question.
Sure.
Um, city ditch piping construction will be twenty-five through twenty-six. So exciting to be at this point.
Yep.
Um, can you remind us, how, how much of the water quality do you think will be impacted when that project is completed?
So the biggest thing that will, it'll, will, that will be improved by that is hardness. So when we pull water directly from, there's two, two aspects of it. One is the water that we pull directly from Chatfield just has a fundamentally less hard, less hardness to it versus when we pull it out of Union Ave at, um, out of the Platte at Union Ave, which is our pump station. Um, that reach between Chatfield and, and there, there's a lot of influence from, um, urban development as well as, um, the Marcy Gulch wastewater plant, which is Howland's Ranch, which discharges in between that reach. That's one piece of it. The second piece of it is we'll be closing up all the areas of, of urban runoff that run into the ditch, which creates more hardness. With that, we'll also improve, um, taste and odor to a degree because those contaminants that help to, like, the, uh, nutrients that help to, um, you know, support the growth of algae and things like that, will be, will be restricting that, um, that influence of those, um, contaminants along the way because we'll be closing the pipe where, where we have pretty significant areas where urban runoff just runs right into the ditch. Um, and so it's most significantly on hardness and secondarily on, uh, taste and odor.
I appreciate that clarification. I know we've been having these conversations over the last few years, trying to map which project is going to hopefully lead to which outcomes. And as you may know, um, we're in kind of our midsummer, uh, moment when we hear a lot of feedback about the, the taste of the water. So, um, I appreciate the update.
All right. Thank you, Direct, nope. Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. So I, I do have a question about the hardness of the water. Um, because didn't, when you first came, we were doing the bypass of the city ditch and we were concerned about the changing the pH of the water. So the hardness of the water, is it related to the pH of the water at all?
The pH is too different. We actually set the pH at the water plant. And so we actually established the pH level and, and we, we set that level based on, we did what's called an optimal corrosion control study. We submitted it to the state, um, year, year and a half ago. And our optimal corrosion control, which is basically directly related to the lead program. So in order to minimize the amount, the, the potential impact of lead solder, because that's what's all, that's the, all that's gonna be remaining in our system is lead solder in homes. The most optimal corrosion control process was actually changing the pH level. So we run our pH right now, I think at eight point one, between eight point one and eight point four. And that provides optimal hard, optimal, um, it's more basic as opposed to acidic. So it doesn't leach, um, leach out and expose people to that lead solder. So the, the Big Dry Creek Bike Pass project was more about just pure hardness, dissolved solids in the water. Um, and that's what that was trying to do for a, but it was a, it was a small, it was originally a small, envisioned, I think in twenty sixteen when it was originally started as a, as a small project to try and make things a little bit better. As we dug into that, that project had a whole lot more things that needed to be, um, included, which was like vaults and controls and all the electric, the electrical and things like that. And so we haven't, we haven't decided to not move forward with that project. We just pushed it way out in the capital window because we thought directly investing in closing city ditch was actually a better bang for our buck because that's a gravity system. We close it and then we can access even better quality, quality water at Chatfield as opposed to bypassing Big Dry Creek past the intake at Union Ave.
So at some point we may reconsider bypassing Big Dry Creek also, correct?
It is, it is still on our long-term plan. It's just we moved it into the ten-year space and because we felt that there were better, more near-term uses for the funding. We wouldn't want, we didn't want to take the, the project entirely away because the pipes in the ground, there's still, there's still potentially a use for it. It's just from a timing of use of the funds, it didn't make sense now, but we have not, we have not fully taken the project away. It's just, it's just deferred well into the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Van Ryan. Thank you, Deputy Director Stone. Director Ingles.
Uh, that completes the Capitol update.
Any concluding comment? Uh, you had some things you wanted us to weigh in on, on this.
Uh, just if there's any additional feedback, we made some changes to the presentation this time based on Uh just if there's any additional feedback, we made some changes to the presentation this time based on the feedback from last time's presentation uh format or even time of year. I know this is a busy time of year for council. Um we we can do this any time of year for you.
I thought this worked pretty well. I liked the format tonight. Um Councilmember Ward.
I concur. Uh the timing is good because we're going into the next year's capital planning. So it's nice to have a check-in on what's going on right now and where we are. The uh other thing that I really appreciated that was included in the packet is the sort of quick and dirty summary of all the projects at the end. We didn't show it on the slides, but um the project status, costs, and uh project delayed, project on time, project within budget. Um that's really helpful for me for at a glance, so I know what requires or may require some more attention. Um so I really appreciate the addition of that. That's the first time I remember seeing something so well summarized on this.
And I think that was from feedback from the last meeting, so.
Councilmember Noonan Camp.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a really helpful meeting. I really appreciate the mid-year. Other than talking at the CIP just once every year, having this mid-year checkpoint is really helpful, I think, to get a sense of where we're at and to hear how staff are actually allocating funding that we are approving and how it's going. An opportunity to ask questions mid-stream, I think, is helpful. And also, there's just so much happening in the city that to get an update on everything and to see where it's at is really helpful. The only thing that I think maybe we could include maybe more in the presentation is similar to what member Ward was saying around, are we, you know, on budget or not? Sometimes it's hard in, you know, what have we budgeted, what have we spent, what's remaining? That doesn't necessarily tell us if we are pacing and to be on budget or not, right? I think we're getting some of that in the verbal voiceover from staff. Um but that could maybe be included in the presentation, but other than that, I thought it was really helpful.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Director Ingles.
Thank you.
Wonderful presentation on our capital plan. We have a lot going on and it's good to see it all moving forward. Our next item is uh reports from board and commission council liaisons. Anyone have a report? Councilmember Noonan Camp.
I do. The library board met last week. Um they received an update from the consulting firm who has been working with them on their strategic plan. Um and it is almost ready to come to city council, which should be happening in the next few weeks for council to have a study session on the plan and to um be able to, you know, read it and hear more about it. But it's been a really wonderful process. I think the outcome is really strong. The library board is quite happy with it. Um and then also just had a conversation about some of the developments that have been happening within the library. Obviously, some of the challenges that the library has faced in the last few weeks and how well the staff have handled that. I think we're really seeing um a stronger resiliency in the library, um and a lot of support from the board. So I would say um they're firing all cylinders, going well.
Right. Member Prang.
Thank you. Um just a reminder, you may have already seen it, but we've received an invitation and the whole community should be um receiving a communication to um attend Thursday evening's uh groundbreaking at Cushion Park to kick off our renew and recreate campaigns. Um I think it'll be an exciting event. There's free ice cream and you'll get a glimpse at what's to come, so.
Thank you. Member Prang. Member Ward.
The Budget Advisory Committee met last Tuesday. Uh they are currently in the process of finalizing their annual report to council. A lot of really good questions coming from this uh group of Budget Advisory Committee members. And also, uh it's an interesting time of year to bring on a new member, but Andrew Forlines joined. Uh I think summer, joining in the summer is a is a great time because the committee isn't, has already largely discussed the report, the annual report. And so it gives the new member an opportunity to see the sausage making on the annual report before they dive into the next year's uh session. So I'm excited for what's to come from that committee.
Anyone else uh for councilmembers' choice? Member Russell.
Thank you. Um I actually have a a couple of, you all got the email um this week on some concerns. Um and I had emailed the city manager and asked if we could perhaps have a study session. I I don't know what that would look like. That may just mean having um uh Peter Van Ryan, perhaps he could come or perhaps he would know um someone that could address the concerns that were addressed in that request.
Um yeah, you council want to weigh in on a study session for that? I would be interested in a study session on the lead service line, as you're talking about lead service line project.
Yes.
I'd be interested in maybe an update about how well it's going and that would give an opportunity for any questions to be raised. Like um I questioned the wisdom of having a study session specifically to point out, you know, critiques of the project overall, having that be the baseline for it. But as far, you know, I think I would support kind of an update on how things are going on the lead service lines moving along very quickly. I think there's a lot of positive things to report there and have an opportunity for people to ask questions as well. Other, anyone else interested in that study session? Member Noonan Camp.
You're referring to a study session with council on that issue, on lead service lines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um my understanding is that this is, at least to me, this is the only negative or we're questioning piece of feedback we've gotten just from one citizen. Um so if that's the case, I'm correcting if I'm wrong, I'm not sure it makes sense to do a whole study session in response to one citizen email.
Yeah, totally.
Um so I do wonder, just staff time, does it make sense to do this as a written response to a council request? Um I feel like we've had a lot of conversations about lead service line. I think we had a study session not that long ago. Um so I I my my sense would be to re-up that information and maybe do a written response, but I would not um I would not do another study session at this point, just with staff time.
Very good. I, yeah, I can, I I agree with that. I think a written response would be appropriate and I missed that study session, so. I'll get caught up.
Mayor Protem, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Or maybe as my report. Um, member Russell, would you like to craft um a council request from that email um to forward to council?
Um I I could do that and and I would be okay with a uh council request in response um to that. Um and and I think it's important information for council to have because if there's any validity, um perhaps it is something that we need to look into. Um so I will work on uh that council request. Um the other, there, um I talked to a couple of people that live at the corner of Union Avenue and Decatur. And um both of them talked about speeding on Union Avenue. I mean, Union Avenue goes from Santa Fe to Federal. And speeds in there get really fast. Um like, you know, maybe sixty or seventy miles an hour. Um the other question that I have, there was some sort of um work on the corner of Union and Decatur. I don't, it's got one of those temporary patches in it. Did we have a water line break or was there, can we find out what happened at that corner? Um I don't know. It's, I think it's fairly recent. Um and I think if we could look into perhaps maybe some enforcement of speeding on Union Avenue. Thank you.
All right, city managers, report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um did you say that the patch was, member Russell, did you say the patch was at uh Union Indicator also? Okay. Okay, yeah, I'll get that, the enforcement um request in and um do uh council requests on the patch as well. Um I appreciate um council's questions and um great feedback tonight on processes, et cetera. I was kind of sitting here reflecting, thinking about um for instance, on the CIP, just how far we've come, mainly with your direction and the council immediately preceding you. But especially this council just really giving us good direction on what you want to see in the capital um plan um and just how organized um the finance department has become um in their uh the way that they um structure this. We now have monthly check-ins at a staff level um to find out where these projects are. Um and just want you, I would encourage you to keep asking the tough questions about, you know, delays or budgets um and that sort of thing, but um reflecting on that and then same with street paving, just how um scientific we've become in trying to use technology um to come up with, you know, areas where we're spending our capital dollars as opposed to simply the kind of district model that um we followed in the past. We still follow that because it's a pretty good, you know, every four years to touch a street is a pretty good um pattern. But we definitely are doing a lot more of those worst firsts, um kind of identifying um uh work as a result of use, the use of technology. So thank you for your um support on those endeavors. Um couple of uh announcements, um we had a busy week um at uh the city last week. We had our fourth adult night um at Pirate's Cove. Um that was uh had about seven hundred and fifty participants, so that continues to grow. It's a great um source of funds for the Pirate's Cove, supplementing our daily usage. Um the final night of the season will um is scheduled for August sixth. And then we also had the fortieth anniversary celebration of the Inglewood Rec Center. Um and that was on Saturday with an eighties themed pool party. We had about fifty people attended that. Um and and lots of old photos from the rec center, I hear. Um also, we had a tour of SPR for um the Littleton Business Chamber. Um had, took a tour and had their meeting there last week. And um just wanted the public to know that the plant gives tours of the South Plate Renew Wastewater Treatment Plant anytime, so feel free to schedule those. Um it's good for young and old. Um and I think that that's all I've got. Glad to answer any questions. Other questions council may have.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. I don't see any questions, so uh that will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.